Gina, can you hear us?
It's coming through now.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Um, council member. Dan Doyle, excuse me.
President.
Council member. I'm ready now. Jeff Hanson.
President.
Council member Kugel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dobbins.
She just stepped out to get her glasses.
Understood. And Mayor Berkey.
Mayor.
Also in attendance, we've got city attorney Ginny Chandler. City manager Paul Anderson. Um, city planner Scott Perkins, city engineer Jason Island and myself, deputy city clerk Gina Givus.
Thank you Gina. Um, item two tonight is our meeting and tonight that falls to me. Um, I'd like to add that Vice Mayor Dobbins has just arrived. Okay, so my reading is a nice short one because we have a lot to go over tonight. And this is something I saw painted on the side of the car in Point Arena. And it said, "The worth of a nation is in the well-being of its people." And I thought that was great. So, short and sweet. Um, can I go to item three approval of the agenda? Has anyone had a chance to look at the agenda? And can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, Anna, thank you. Motion. And a second from council member Kugel. Um, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Council member Doyle.
Uh, yeah.
Council member Hanson.
Yes.
Council member Kugel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dobbins. Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, item four is the mayor's report and announcements. And tonight we have our Mendocino County Sheriff here, Mr. Matt Kendall. Uh, would you like to step to the podium and, um, tell us what's new in the Point Arena area?
Thank you, Mayor Berkey and members of the council. My lieutenant JD Kilmer has the, uh, basically, we do an engine year stats. I'd like to read those out to you and then go over kind of the meat and potatoes of what we learned in those things. And so, uh, I would ask with permission to call on Lieutenant.
Of course. Lieutenant Kilmer, welcome.
Good evening. And Paul, are we able to share my screen a second?
Yes.
Let me know when you see it and I'll get started. You able to see my screen?
Oh.
And how about now?
No, I'm sorry. We still don't have it.
JD, if you email it to me, I can pull it up probably pretty quick. There we go. There you go.
All right, very well.
Great.
Right, so yes, like the sheriff said, at the end of the year, we like to compile, uh, our, our call stats and types of calls, whatnot. And this is all going to be specific to the coast, um, division. And to give you a little background really quick, um, pull stats, where I pull stats out of the eleven major areas within the coastal jurisdiction of the sheriff's office. And I'm gonna give you the total number of calls, for example, for the coast sector. Um, caller initiated, uh, was thirty-five hundred and eighty. And Point Arena was three hundred and sixteen total calls for service. And that would be caller initiated. So somebody calling the sheriff's office to report, uh, some nature of some type of incident. Uh, deputy initiated, uh, for the coast. When I say deputy initiated, these are, uh, initiated activities by deputies, whether it be, it could be a contact with somebody through a traffic stop, a pedestrian stop. It could be, um, uh, a patrol of an area. Uh, but we had a total of nineteen hundred and thirty-four. A hundred and forty-eight of those, uh, were in the city of Point Arena. We've taken a total of six hundred and one investigative reports. Uh, thirty-four of those were taken out of Point Arena. And for the year, we had a one hundred and nine arrests, eleven of which were out of Point Arena. So it kind of give you the, the comparison there as far as, uh, total with, in the coast compared to just within Point Arena. Next is, so, out of the eleven areas that I pull stats from, the top four, uh, contributors for calls for service were, uh, citizens call in. Start from Fort Bragg. You can see that's our major, uh, our major call volume originates in the unincorporated area of Fort Bragg. Not the city, but outside the city in our jurisdiction. Uh, second, that would be Mendocino, uh, then Wallala, uh, then Point Arena. So that would be the top four. And this kind of chart will show the year, um, by month of call volume. And you can see it's pretty consistent across the board. Uh, I think anywhere from July to October is where we kind of get our highest amount of calls. So for Point Arena, uh, I go through call types really quick. Uh, this is nothing long. Crimes against persons. So in Point Arena, we had thirteen calls for service related to harassment. Those account for fourteen percent of all harassment calls taken, uh, within the coast division. Uh, simple assaults, we had a total of nine. Um, they account for twelve percent out of the total assault calls, simple assault calls, uh, taken in the coast division. Uh, domestic assault, we had twelve calls, uh, child abuse, ten, elder abuse, one. One sexual assault, as you see, it accounted for twenty percent of those, who we only had five total with, uh, in the coast division. And then I got zero for assault. Other, it's actually misspelt there, but uh, that would be your more serious, uh, assault levels, like assault with a deadly weapon or something like that. There were zero in Point Arena. Then going into property crimes, uh, I can tell you right now, based on last year's statistics, our property crimes within Point Arena are way down. This has been a very good year for property crimes, uh, being reduced. So burglary, for example, we've only had six, uh, reports of burglary, uh, reported to us, uh, in Point Arena. They account for eight percent of, of the, of the total on the coast. Uh, fraud-related is also down, a total of four. Uh, theft, we've had a total of five calls only. That one was way down. Uh, trespassing, eleven calls. Vandalism, nine reports. And then we had six vehicle theft reports this year. So that number, I think, is high. Uh, but we only take vehicle theft reports in the city of Point Arena. Uh, CHP would be responsible for anything outside Point Arena and the coast, but six is still kind of high for Point Arena this year. And then, uh, last kind of non, non-criminal related calls for service, uh, we had a total of twenty citizen assists. Uh, were citizens calling in requesting some type of assistance. Uh, coroner-related, we had eight, uh, reportable deaths to the coroner. Uh, nine, uh, situations surrounding mental illness. And those would be, uh, calls that we specifically handled, uh, as a sheriff's office that weren't referred to uh, a crisis response unit or, or something, um, another agency. Uh, only two missing persons, uh, twenty-six, uh, calls related to suspicious circumstances. And, uh, that number is, is a good number. Just for the simple fact, people are calling in to report something they think is out of the ordinary, right? And I'll tell you that, uh, on the south coast, not specifically to Point Arena, but Wallala, uh, we had a couple suspicious circumstance calls that were called in that resulted in the ability to close a couple large-scale, uh, burglary investigations. Um, just because somebody saw something and they thought they should report it, which gave us a big investigative lead. Uh, traffic collisions, there were a total of ten. And again, we only investigate traffic collisions in the city of Point Arena. So that's why it accounts for a hundred percent of the traffic collisions that, uh, we took. And then last, welfare checks to check on somebody's welfare, we had a total of eleven. Um, a lot of those came, um, towards the end of, uh, last year. And, uh, that would kind of give you your annual, uh, report there. I'm happy to answer any questions on those if anybody has any.
Council members, any questions? Public, any questions? Um, Lieutenant Kilmer, thank you very much. Um, I think we're doing pretty good as far as our report card for Point Arena. I think that things have improved, wouldn't you say, over last year?
I definitely believe they have. And, and, uh, the, you know, the, again, I didn't really cover our staffing, but our staffing level, you gotta, you gotta remember, we covered eight hundred square miles on the coast. The coastal division of the field operations portion. Um, and we currently are staffed with eight deputies and two sergeants. And, uh, that, that call volume is, is definitely for the entire coast is, is high. Um, and it allows, there's, there's not a lot of time that allows us to be proactive, uh, in the county. But I can, I can tell you on the coast, we do have, uh, more time than anywhere else in the county to devote to being proactive uh, in our enforcements to, uh, deter and prevent crime and try to solve, uh, particular crimes that are affecting the community. Um, and we've, that's kind of been our focus on the south coast. Uh, like I said, the theft-related, the burglary-related stuff on is way down, which is a good thing. Um, and the deputies have put in work, uh, in collaboration with working with, uh, community members in, in certain areas that have been impacted, um, which have resulted in the statistics that we're seeing today. Definitely.
Well, thank you. Sheriff Kendall, would you like to add anything?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Lieutenant Kilmer. I better put on my magic glasses here. I look at my notes and I think they're written in Arabic. Now they're English now. So it's an excellent report and we've got some positive things to build on there. But we can't take our foot off the throttle. I have concerns as everyone who lives in rural communities. Rural communities are really hard to serve because five calls in a rural community where there isn't a lot of services and not a lot of personnel to be able to deal with it can be as impactful as fifty calls in an area where you have a lot of people. Um, the future concerns that we're working on, we have brought our response times down. And a lot of that is because I've been working very hard with Lieutenant Kilmer. He has changed up some of our patrols to make sure that we have more people in the areas that are harder to get to. If we fill the corners first, the standards are easy to deal with because we don't have to have the number of personnel in there. We have more, uh, allied agencies and people to help us. Uh, I wanted to throw out a big shout out to all of our partners regarding the recent storms, state local fire agencies. I, I can't thank Mike and, and, uh, and Chief Warner on the south coast enough because the south coast was hit in a fashion that I don't think that any of us have seen in a very, very long time. Um, and those partnerships have helped us out immensely. Um, so the future things that we're working on to get those response times down, we're working on getting a resident deputy down there. We've got one young man who seems to be interested in it right now. We're going to be working on buying into housing. Thank you, Nancy. We just had a short conversation a few minutes ago. And then I'm gonna have a meeting with the tribe tomorrow regarding a bunch of different things. But one of the things I'm gonna be looking for is red in the deputy housing on the south coast. Um, personnel numbers for the sheriff's office are coming up. Coast sector is sitting in a better place than many of the other sectors. And let's face it, the coast is a beautiful place and so we have a lot of people who want to be here. And, um, as we begin to rebuild our numbers up, we've got a lot of things working in our direction. Mendocino County has been very good for my deputies and to me, and I appreciate that. Policing, public service is always a handshake with community that gets things done. And in these out-of-the-way places where we all have to work together, I think we do it better. The we recently had some legislation that was pushed through. It was excellent. I worked with a couple of our, our senators on it regarding hiring some of these DACA kids. Kids who are not documented in the United States, but they go up here. I recently hired a couple of those young men who are really good people. They're gonna be going up to police academy. And they're gonna stay in these communities because this is where they were based. I've got a couple of, uh, representatives from the Brown Valley Indian Tribe working for me now. And I like to pat myself on the back. I worked for the grandfathers when I was younger and, uh, I, they're really neat people and I think that they're gonna serve our community well. We're gonna continue pushing forward with that. And then just a few other nuts and bolts things. I think that, uh, in this coming year, in twenty twenty-three, if we keep our eyes on the prize and we people count and we make sure that we meet the needs first with a good relationship and a good partnership with our communities, we're gonna continue to see these numbers, these stats that we have, begin to fall on burglaries, on crimes. But we've got to get ahead of a few of these things. Orner's cases are through the roof. We have a lot of problem with addiction in Mendocino County. We have a lot of problem with mental health in Mendocino County. So we're gonna put a lot more focus into that in the next coming year because that is an area that we need. We've gotta put water on the, the house that's burning as opposed to the neighbor's house. And so this one is really concerning for me. Um, but as we work together to get this done, I think we're gonna see some positive outcomes. My dad used to say tomorrow will never be a problem as long as you're ready for it yesterday. And, uh, you know, if we look at where we're going right now, we can get ready for tomorrow. So I just wanted to tell you thank you. And, uh, that was an excellent report from Lieutenant Kilmer. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you, Sheriff Kendall. That was an excellent report from you as well. Super uplifting. Thank you so much for everything that you do for us. And like you said, it's all about partnership. We're all in it together.
Long drive home and nothing. You look pretty good. You cheated. It was a lot of work that's been on on the last week.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Okay, um, as far as the mayor's report, all I wanna say is I was on a fabulous vacation and, um, I have nothing to report. Uh, so anyway, council reports, city-related meetings, item five. Did any council member attend a city-related meeting that we would like to report on? Okay, uh, council committee and commissioner reports. I don't believe we had any committee meetings because of all the weather issues. Uh, I mean, it was just catching the poles and the dite, I think, for the most part. So we'll be back at it next month. Um, item six, privilege of the floor. This is our public comment period. Um, members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda tonight um, can take this time to take three minutes to, I guess, the council. Uh, uh, we can't take any action on what you say, but we can listen and take notes. So is there anybody who would like to take advantage of privilege of the floor tonight? You can use your raise hand feature. And I see that Billy or Anna, your hand is raised. Go ahead, Billy.
Hello, um, I just wanted to mention something really small. On the emails for the city council meetings that you get before the meeting with the agenda, it has a Zoom link. And that Zoom link doesn't work, um, for the actual meeting. And the only link that works is the one off the city council's website. So if possible, if that link that goes out in that email could be the link that works, that would be great. Um, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks for the heads up. Okay, Jennifer, uh, Jennifer Smallwood.
Yeah.
Okay, we can barely hear you, Jennifer. Can you, um, get closer to your speaker maybe?
Turn my speaker off and then that way you can probably actually announce.
Much better. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so I wanted to give a, a little touch to base with, uh, Fire Safe Point Arena. Um, we had talked about having a meeting, the first meeting back being in March, but since the storm isn't everything. There is an article, or there was a letter to the ICO that someone suggested that after Katrina, they had a lessons learned meeting and with the community. And I thought this, uh, February would be a better time to do that than March because people's memories will be sharper. So February first, next week on Wednesday, four forty-five, we'll have our regular Fire Safe Point Arena meeting. And it will be, uh, basically a, a debrief or a talk about, uh, what worked and what didn't work for folks during the storm as relates to preparedness. Um, and it will focus on personal preparedness. The meeting in March will focus, will be the same topic, but it will focus on, uh, support systems uh, that worked or didn't work for people such as, uh, you know, the fire department of the city or Red Cross or whoever. But this, the one in February will be just like, do you wish you had a generator? Do you wish you actually had water or food or had a go-bag or whatever, a tent? Um, or had cut down some more trees? So, um, yeah, I just want to make sure that people knew about that. We're also working, uh, we're in the real preliminary stages of working with a group called Listos, which will be helping us, uh, they have a Spanish language program for preparedness. And they use it in Southern California, in different parts of the state. They have a person in Ucaia that, uh, contacted me. And so we'll be working together to put together Spanish language preparedness, uh, information programs or including first aid and CPR for people whose, uh, language, whose first language is Spanish. Um, yeah, and then we're gonna continue to work towards having, uh, meetings specifically targeted toward parts of the community that, uh, would have different needs during, uh, a situation such as the heavy rain or a fire or something. And we'll have more information about that as we go along. Um, so yeah, four forty-five, first Wednesday of the month, which is actually February first, which is next week, at the Point Arena Coast Community Library will be our first meeting of this year. And come with your list of stuff that you wish you had done better, or stuff that you're really proud that you did. And, um, we will have a good time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. I'll just get down with you. Anybody else? Hands up. Uh, not seeing any. Okay, I'm gonna move on to our consent calendar. Item seven. Um, we have four items to approve, um, in a single motion. That would be approval of city council meeting minutes from December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Our transaction report from October twenty twenty-two, wastewater report of December twenty twenty-two, and resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero three signature authority for the city. Um, can I get a motion to, um, approve the consent calendar?
I'll make the motion to, can, to, uh, approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, Councilmember Kugel. And a second, second, thank you, Vice Mayor Dobbins. Um, can I get, if there's no discussion, can I get a roll call vote?
Council member Doyle.
Hi.
Council member Hanson.
Yes.
Council member Kugel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dobbins.
Yes.
Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Gina. Okay, moving on to item eight presentations. Our first presentation is from Lee Christensen from Sonoma Clean Power's Evergreen Program. If you could state your name for the record, that would be great.
Good evening. I'm Lee Christensen, a commercial accounts manager with Sonoma Clean Power. And I'm going through a presentation about giving some background about Sonoma Clean Power and talking about our Evergreen service.
Just gonna get you set here. Give me one second.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah.
It's great to be here. I have the pleasure of doing a tour of, uh, Point Arena Lighthouse today. Uh, one of our Evergreen customers and, uh, there others deserve, but I am marketing. But you see it as a beacon for renewable energy and on the coast, so.
Absolutely. Did you do a tower tour?
Yes.
So exciting, right?
Yes, it was super clear today.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Are you ready, Paul?
Uh, we're ready.
Okay, we're ready. Go ahead.
All right, so we can move on to the next slide. So we, so Sonoma Clean Power, if you're not familiar.
Can you get a little closer to the mic? I'm sorry, you can adjust it. Perfect. Awesome. Thank you.
I'll move this over a little bit. So Sonoma Clean Power, we are a not-for-profit public agency. So we are set up to serve Sonoma and Mendocino counties, provide electricity that we need to be renewable overall. And we have been doing that since two thousand and fourteen in Sonoma County. And we expanded to Mendocino County in two thousand and seventeen. Overall, we have, uh, two hundred and thirty thousand accounts. So that makes up about half the people that we serve. And Sonoma Clean Power is a community choice aggregator. So there was a state law passed that allows public agencies to secure power on behalf of their residents. And the idea was that it was a way to accelerate the adoption of renewable energy. And also help bring more local programs to the communities that a community choice aggregator serves. And that's certainly gonna focus this Sonoma Clean Power. We, uh, are funded through the sell, sale of electricity. So we purchased the, um, wholesale market and we worked with various providers and, and partnered with PG. And we're based in Santa Rosa. We have, we're employees and we're overseen by board of directors and a community advisory community. So our board of directors is represented by, we have a Mendocino County supervisor on our board as well as a representative from one of the three cities in Mendocino County. That, that assignment is rotational. So Point Arena was represented in your style. Apparently it's in Fort Bragg. So given of how the CCA or mutual value dimension works, as I mentioned, Sonoma Clean Power purchases, uh, renewable energy and other, and low carbon energy from, um, various sources. Some of them are local, some of them are other various places in California. A little bit outside of California. And then we partner with PG to deliver that power to our customers. So we, um, we're very close with PG to handle all of our billing. And Sonoma Clean Power customers are still PG customers. We give them the charges for delivery charge. But instead of the generation charge that you give to the customers, their customers, that comes from Sonoma Clean Power. And we then are able to provide a drop of power that is, you know, the PG needs and competitively priced in two thousand and twenty-two are rate for the same of PG. So if you were PG or Sonoma Clean Power, you'd get the same for the energy that, the electricity that you use. And we are fortunately, meaning as of February first, um, able to offer power to our customers at five percent below PG's cost for the headcount. So we, um, we're, we're, uh, it's a big focus of ours to keep our rates competitive. And that means stabilizing rates as much as we can. So we haven't always been below PG, um, about we can stay there as long as we can. The, uh, service territories, I mentioned, Sonoma, Mendocino Counties, so it's all the cities, which are the counties. Um, the two exceptions, Hillsburg and Ucaia, um, both have their own new street utilities. And therefore they're not served by PG and therefore not, not served by Sonoma Clean Power. We, um, moving on to the next slide. And, uh, so one of the big focuses of Sonoma Clean Power is helping communities reduce their carbon footprint through through various programs initiatives. Purchasing as much renewable energy as we can against main focus, but we are also able to use the revenue from the sale of electricity to develop additional programs that can complement existing programs out there that are offered by PG and by the city. And we also work to stabilize the cost of energy as much as we can. And as I mentioned, the five percent budget was a product of that effort to generate look on that on, to kind of help residents manage their electricity bill. And part of that is helping them reduce the amount of energy they use. So we have programs that focus on energy efficiency, which is one, is the one most cost-effective ways to, you know, have the ones energy. An example of one of the programs we have is Advanced Energy Center. This is a facility in Santa Rosa, just middle public, and it's set up to help folks navigate electrifying their homes or businesses. I think of it as an IKEA for electric rotation because you can go there and see, you know, firsthand what heat pump, water, hot water heater looks like or induction stove top. You can try one out. There's heat pump cooling units there and other technologies that in some cases are very needed folks, but are essential if someone's looking to transition off of gas or natural gas or cooking. And we also have incentives and a skill crew of staff there taking certain questions. If you're ever in downtown Santa Rosa passing through and you're feeling out of electrification, make sure you check, check out the Advanced Energy Center.
Yes.
So it's downtown Santa Rosa. If you know where the Russian River Brewing Company is located on Fourth Street, it's just a block or so up from that. Yeah. Yeah, so when a customer becomes part of, becomes a Sonoma Clean Power customer, the default services can start as soon as they're renewable and about ninety-one percent carbon free. Then mentioned the rates of PG and it's a mix of various sources, we'll talk about those a little later. But it's a good, good starting point. We also offer, next slide, a summary of our next three, next service, which is Evergreen. So this is for customers who are very focused on sustainability and just provide a hundred percent renewable twenty-four seven. And one of the cool things about Evergreen, it's a hundred percent local. So we procure all the power with the Sonoma and Mendocino Counties. A good chunk of that comes from the Geysers, which is a geothermal project in northeastern Sonoma County. And this does come with a premium. So it's two and a half cents per TWH on top of the clean start rate. But it's something that is available to all of our residential customers and have options to opt up to that. On the next slide, one of the you know, the focuses of Evergreen, one of the benefits besides just the benefits I mentioned exactly for individual customers who who opt up to it is that it helps support local projects and this map shows, you know, where we focus those budgets initially. It's been Sonoma County. As you can stand to Mendocino, we also feel looking for other projects there that we can develop. But these are about one made a lot solar arrays. We typically are on east land and sometimes a lot of property and then that they're a good site for solar. And we've worked with solar developers to enter into long-term procurement contracts. So Sonoma Clean Power personally owns projects, so we help get them developed and do our long-term contracts to these where we get a good rate relative to what my pay elsewhere. And the more of these we can develop, the better it is for the region, particularly once we look long-term at reliability and resiliency. The more power we can generate in Mendocino and Sonoma Counties, the better. And this is one pathway of going there. The, to clarify the differences between start and Evergreen, so on the left, you start shows the breakdown and the geothermal and solar are a big, big part of it. We also have a little biomass mixed in there and winds on the renewable side. And then on the carbon free, a good chunk of that comes from large hydro with a sliver of nuclear. That nine percent is we buy power on the stock market. A lot of our, most of our energy is purchased, you know, one or more years in advance, but we don't purchase all the power. It's not difficult to forecast how we actually need. So that nine percent is there's no renewable credit from that. There might be a little renewable mixed in there, but it's not something that you can count. Whereas Evergreen, you know, straightforward, like over eighty percent from geothermal and not a portion from the local solar array projects. So a big focus tonight was to talk about Evergreen and the opportunity for the city of Point Arena to upgrade all or some of your accounts. This slide was looking at the fifteen electricity accounts that you have. It's PG and Sonoma Clean Power. And broke them out by various facilities using the side address. As you may expect, your wastewater treatment plant uses over half of the power associated with the city facilities. City Hall is just under a quarter of what your electrical scene usage. And then they get the rest is hanging on the park, efficient here and streetlights, some of that's in these accounts. A couple of things to think, to think about as you're assessing your opportunity to upgrade to Evergreen. One is that many cities who operate it, so like Sonoma County, like most of the cities typically do it all at once. So they just, for the work of the situation, you just move all your accounts into Evergreen. However, I do want to acknowledge there, there's a more phased approach you could consider and now focusing on specific facilities that are are high-profile, like City Hall, or ones that are maybe very hard to done, energy efficiency and have got them using as little as power as possible with those facilities and then going to Evergreen continues to that next level. So streetlights, I think is a good example of that. A lot, most of those have been upgraded to LEDs. I don't know if you're the ones that you're meaning to have, but if so. And also they run at night, which is, you know, you might pull solar off of the grid at night and whether you took like Evergreen where you're able to draw from the Geysers. At night is usually when the natural gas season is to make like the city. So certainly the carbon you talked about is. And the other thing to think about is just to emphasize that as you're looking at the facilities, really trying to find the ones where you're doing energy efficiency first, it's generally the most cost-effective way. And kind of that hurdle, Evergreen is a great way to fully bring down the carbon footprint of your facility and allow you to, and the benefits of that. So on the slide, I included, so first column is number of accounts, second is your usage, and that was for a one-year period. But it was two thousand twenty-two. And then that fourth column is the estimated cost. That's just taking your annual usage multiplied by the two and a half cents per TWH. How much in addition, how much your electrical would increase by, by adding Evergreen? And then that, that last column is the estimated pounds of CO2 that we would see a reduction by moving to Evergreen since, since the carbon footprint is out. It is much less than what we, you know, what we were currently on, which is clean start, which is already pretty clean, but this is certainly a big improvement. And I'll just highlight again that City Hall and streetlights combined is just over a thousand dollars a year. And it would be my strong recommendation to consider as a, those are very high visibility facilities and ones that that it's for, but operating. And that concludes my presentation. No further questions.
Thank you, Lee. Very complete.
Thanks.
Yeah. So can, can you screen share again and go back to that one slide?
Sure.
Just so we understand, dollars and cents, the one, that one there. Okay. So the Evergreen cost estimate, if you look at the total at the bottom, where all the city accounts, three thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars, that would be the additional cost of the two point five cents a kilowatt hours in addition to what we pay.
Exactly.
Okay. Great. So what do we pay already? Citywide, do you know?
I want to say our electrical bill is about four thousand dollars a month.
So.
So that's forty-eight thousand dollars a year roughly.
Okay, and this is for a month. So how much was it a month?
Is this annual?
That's an annual.
Oh, that's an annual.
So it's adding less than five percent.
Okay, great. That's what I wanted to know, less than five percent. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Christensen?
I was wondering.
Oh, sorry, excuse me.
What programs you might be aware of that we could upgrade, say, solar for a wastewater plant or any of the programs, you might be able to help direct this towards to for a might possible microgrid program when the summer and the experience in PSPS shutdowns and and that sort of thing, maybe, maybe aware of what might just suggest.
Yeah, that's a great question and one that I know a lot of communities are looking at. Sonoma Clean Power right now is not specifically offering any incentives related to developing solar. Or specifically to for a reference fire treatment plant, like a floating solar array. However, we certainly can help connect you with other resources, even the same, and I know we're looking at the Reduction Act that is coming down. There are various resources in that, I think I'll push forward, but very focused on electric rotation and solar. On the other side of the page, just a battery storage is an important element of the microgrid. And it's one that, you've been pushing reduction act, there's also resources in that. But I certainly can be glad to give back to you some more information there specific to Sonoma Clean Power or on that, with that collection burner. I, I know on the North Coast, one of our sister organizations, the Energy Authority, which is also a universal aggregator, worked on a microgrid project. Involved in airport, I believe, the Star Facility that was north of New York. And that was done led hosted by the New York aggregator, but also PG. And we were able to launch that after many years. So it was, I know a challenging project, but one that is intending to be a model. So then I can want to look towards as, as a reference point here and step in that opportunities there. I didn't catch the, the second project. Yeah. So yeah, that was to the microgrid project was with the Redwood Post Energy Authority. And it was projects north of New York, you can touch that and involve their, their work. Now, I'm about to send you more information about that. I'll send it to Paul.
Okay. Do you have any further questions from the council? Now that I'm going to go to the public, can you put our if you raise your hand, you should raise hands feature. I want to invite you to ask any questions in my hour. Mr. Christensen? Jennifer Smallwood.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Okay, Jennifer Smallwood here. I, yeah, you're saying that I didn't really hear everything you said about the streetlights. You said you think they're LED, whatever. In our neighborhood, we're really interested in in having them be not shining in our houses and being so bright. And I'm wondering if there's an energy saving light system. Did you, did you say they're solar operated or so? I mean, I, is there something you know, that, that we can use less energy to make the lights work and so they are nicer lights? You know, they're just not just this shiny white light. Maybe we could save some energy that way, too.
Yeah, so I don't have any specific details about the streetlight in your community. I was just making an observation that in many communities the, the streetlights have been upgraded to LEDs. Now, I will acknowledge that in some cases that means the light is brighter during the streetlight. These tend to provide safety benefits for the community and like all the, from an LED to provide that. With that said, I, I know there are some communities that look at leveraging a function which essentially is an occupancy sensor. So it allows the light to increase in brightness when it recognizes the presence of a car or a person. And some of the news that has helped address concerns around bright lights on all night. So but I am, I'm not a streetlight expert and I, again, I don't know any specifics about which streetlights, but it's just something to look at in the case of Evergreen, but those are great items to communicate with power for.
Okay, Olivia Ford.
Hello, I was curious if Sonoma Clean Power is working or already has or is working on any programs that would help lower the costs, the rates for individual customers. I know you mentioned at the beginning of the presentation that they are competitive rates. But my experience, and I know a lot of people in the city and the areas experience has been that their bill has changed drastically once they actually opt out of the Sonoma Clean Power Program. And obviously, like, it's important to, for people to be able to stay a part of it, to have more renewable energy. And I'm just wondering if there's any like financial support programs or anything like that, so that more people can actually choose to stay opted in to Sonoma Clean Power or Sonoma Clean Power is working on that in any way. Thank you.
Yes, so one thing I wanted to clarify, in two thousand twenty-two, the cost of being a Sonoma Clean Power customer relative to a PG customer, which you got, you got generation from PG was exactly the same. So no difference in cost with either path. In both cases, both Sonoma Clean Power customers and just PG customers do pay a PG delivery charge for power. So it's only on the generation side that, that Sonoma Clean Power is involved. And we we align our rates in two thousand twenty-two to be this exactly the same as PG. So there shouldn't be any cost difference going from one to the other since last year. However, the way the bill is set up you, because Sonoma Clean Power charges are built separately from PG delivery, you have to kind of track the bill correctly. And, and the bill can be a little complicated to navigate. So sometimes people assume that, oh, my costs have gone down, but in fact, the bill is just got a little, a little support and then it's Sonoma Clean Power. The other thing I want to clarify is that as of February first of this year, the Sonoma Power's rate for will be five percent less than PG's for the overall bill cost. Approximately. So that is a shift from last year. So and under all scenarios, a customer will pay less than a Sonoma Clean Power customer than a just PG customer. And that's, that's for, that's our current arrangement. That's not a guaranteed that will be the same in two thousand twenty-four, we intend it to be. But it's keeping our rates as affordable as possible. This is a huge priority and keeping them as stable as possible is part of that. One last thing in terms of, we don't, Sonoma Clean Power doesn't offer any rate reduction related to, beyond what I've described, but there are programs offered with PG that, that Sonoma Clean Power customers can take advantage of for the lower income. So certainly looking to that and that's the criteria. And check out PG's website for more details on that.
Great, thank you. Olivia, your hand is still up. Are you good? Okay, it's down now. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Christensen? If not, I want to thank you for your presentation. This was not a If not, I want to thank you for your presentation. This is not an action item tonight for us, just a presentation. So we'll be in touch and thank you for making the trek out here. I know it was hard.
It was my pleasure.
Yeah.
And yeah, we hope you consider action before on upgrading and like you said, even a couple of counts goes a long ways to to help him on your grant.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, our next presentation is from Evergreen Skate Park. Is that a Zoom presentation?
Yes, it's Ben here. And we'll do the presentation via, he's got a presentation on Zoom.
How do you say your last name, Ben?
You can say it lava check, so sort of a silent H.
Oh, silent H, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for attending tonight.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me. All right, I'm gonna try and share my screen. And get this. Looks like I'm up. Are you guys seeing that? Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So, yeah, my name is Ben Lavacek. I'm a designer and a project manager for Evergreen Skate Parks. I've been working at this company since two thousand seventeen and I've been working with skate park development since two thousand fourteen. Our focus here at Evergreen Skate Parks is is pretty specific. You know, we focus primarily on skate park design and construction, which really ranges from very large scale regional parks. The photo on the right is in Frisco, Colorado, and that park is about forty thousand square feet. And then on the left is one of the smallest projects we've done, which is sort of just an architectural skateboarding spot along a walking path. So we sort of run the whole gamut of from very small projects to very large projects and everything in between. We do also do consulting services with municipalities and with architecture firms. So our team, our company is a hundred percent skater owned and operated. The company was started by husband-wife duo Billy and Catherine Coulon, who are on the the left two on that photo. They got into skate parks in the Pacific Northwest after being lifelong skateboarders and decided to go out on their own after working for a few different companies. And have sort of carried that ethos of of skater designed and skater built with this company, which we just really believe in, to have the people directly using the parks, being in charge of the the construction quality and the design of the parks. And we feel that that sort of dynamic is also the best for interacting with and understanding public input. So our team, you know, ranges from architects, designers, skilled craftsmen. We have construction foremen that have been in this industry for going on thirty years now. So we like to mix the the old with the new and and trying to innovate as much as we can. Now I'm going to jump into some of our sort of favorite projects right now. I've got a few. This one is pretty close to you guys. North of Willets on one oh one, Leightonville, California. This is fairly small in scale. It's about five thousand square feet. But it packs a whole lot in. It was a really unique project. We worked with local advocates to come up with the design and then also during construction, had multiple site visits throughout the process to tweak elements of the park based on community input. This pool features or this park features a pool style bowl and a surfy snake run surrounding it with a lot of different elements. Here's a new favorite of ours completed summer of last year in Deer Lodge, Montana. A really unique design feature of this park is that there's a track going around a large existing tree. So this is a really cool example of just our ability to create a custom design to the space to fit it around existing topography and existing features like this large tree. Here's a park in Coeur d'Alene that's a bit of a different style. It's a little bit more linear street style design, but it still has sort of our design philosophy of low skating and sort of like a roundabout traffic philosophy as opposed to linear lane style skate parks. We really think that this roundabout philosophy can accommodate a large number of users and also increases the different ways that you can skate the park so that it stays fresh and fun for years for people that live right there for that park. Here's another uniquely shaped park in Alberton, Montana. The the shape of this footprint is is definitely part aesthetic, but it also is fitting the existing topography and working around existing trees. We try to create multiple zones in our parks. For instance, on this Alberton Park, we have the pool bowl, a central flow zone, and then that little track on the top is sort of a street style track. So whenever one part of the park is busy, you can sort of retreat to another part. But they're also cohesive in the way that you can connect them all together if the park is sort of open. Here's a large circular park in Sunnyside, Washington. I feel like this is a good park. As an example of our ability to combine lots of different elements of skateboarding. So we've got some different street style elements. We've got some little tidbits of pool skating and definitely it's all tied together with a a feel of a flow skate park. And then there's also elements of pump track in this park as well. And so this park is a little bit less separated, but all these elements are working cohesively together. This is a new park we completed this summer in Lead, South Dakota. Really excited about this one, but you know, similarly, we fit in some different elements, the pool style bowl, some street elements and some flow areas on each end to keep you going. We really trying to avoid corners in skate parks and dead space. And so these sort of like flow features on the ends are really crucial for us to keep the movement going when once you get from one end of the park to the other. Skate parks are sort of expensive enough, so we really don't want to leave any dead space in any of these parks. This is a larger scale park that we built in Hamilton, Montana a few years ago. This park basically follows a lot of the philosophies I've been talking about. Has sort of similar features, but each of these parks is totally custom. One thing that's pretty special about this park is just the scale. It's a little bit larger than the other parks and there's large height differences in this park. So it has something for the beginner. It's like totally navigable for a beginner skater, but this park also is able to attract like visiting professionals and, you know, other advanced skaters, which creates a really nice environment for the beginner and intermediate skaters to have more skilled skaters to come in and watch and learn from. So I'll jump into our services a bit more specifically. We're totally a turnkey design build company. We have licensed architects on staff and multiple designers who also go to the projects and work onsite as they're being built. We start off typically with a site analysis, so that could mean, you know, reviewing multiple sites with municipalities to determine the best one for in in multiple ways, like what park may have the best user experience and what park may be the easiest and cheapest to construct on. We assist with park master planning. Some projects like in Boulder, Colorado, we did an entire park system. So we went and visited all the parks in their city and came up with a plan of this is the best spot for a large regional park. This is the best park for a small neighborhood park. We also did a small skate spot at the the public library, which was a really cool aspect of that project. So that's what we do for park master planning. We also do just consultation and public design meetings. So through the the design process, we typically do public input meetings. Sometimes that's in person, but we've been doing a lot of them virtual, which has been pretty successful. We also will just do consultation with cities or with architecture firms that are working on master plans for cities. We are able to do computer rendered concept designs. So there's an example of that on the in the top image. And then we also can do stamped engineered construction documents. An example of that is the bottom image. And then to go over our construction services, we do every single aspect of the skate park construction. Very rarely do we sub anything out, although sometimes we may collaborate with a city's public works department or pub or parks department to utilize in-kind resources to reduce prices. But, you know, we can handle everything in-house. So we excavate the job sites, we install drainage plumbing and design drainage systems. We do all our steel fabrication welding. We do all of our grading and compaction, which also includes grading against the park and around the park at completion. We do all of our form setting, steel reinforcement. We have certified shotcrete nozzleman on staff. And of course, we do all the detail work, caulking, painting, sealing, etc. At the end of the job, and then we're also available for skate park maintenance and repair for existing parks or to come back to the parks that we were built. So my final slide is just another new project that we've done last year that we all really loved until you're at Colorado. So I'd really like to open it up for questions and and hear what you guys would like to hear more about.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
Welcome.
Any questions from the guys?
Yes, Anna. Do you provide plans for inter for multi-use parks? So not exclusive to skating and biking?
Well, I mean, so our parks are multi-use as far as skateboards, roller skates, roller blades, scooters, BMX bikes, mountain bikes, you know, that's sort of our focus. And it doesn't really go outside of that.
Ben, do you ever do pump traps?
Yeah, we do. We definitely do. And, you know, my my advice, I feel like always is to really look at some of like our just flow designs. Because the pump tracks are sort of a linear element and we really try and work a pump track type of design into the larger skate park so that it all can be integrated as one and a little bit less separate. But if that is a specific want, you know, of the community or of the local users to have a separated pump track, that's certainly something that we would do.
Okay, thank you. And also in your presentation, also in the printed matter, there's no mention of cost. To get started with a organization like Evergreen, what is the buy-in?
Well, um, cost is definitely always changing and it's sort of dependent on the specifics of each job, but I would I would say as a general, you know, rule of thumb, our projects cost around fifty dollars a square foot. Could be a little bit more, could be a little bit less. So some of those really small projects that I was showing you are like seventy-five thousand dollars. And then they go, you know, they go up from there. So we definitely are interested in projects like, you know, seventy-five thousand dollars and up. So if, but I, and then I would just I could also give you, you know, sort of like an average skate park, you know, for instance, the one in Leightonville is about five thousand square feet. So that one was about two hundred and fifty thousand. And I would say the average, that's sort of on the small side, sort of like an average park is between five to ten thousand square feet, somewhere in there. And then they, I mean, the largest park in the country built, completed last year was like eighty thousand square feet. So it's sort of the sky's the limit, you know?
Yeah. So I'm just curious about your model for turnkey services. So to get started with you, if we were to start with you, what would be the first step?
Well, we certainly could consult. But to to really get going, we would probably enter in into a contract. Typically, a municipality would put out an RFP for skate park design build services. And then we would, you know, submit a proposal for that RFP and hope to be selected. But we're certainly open to just consulting up until that point, answering any questions that you guys might have for how the skate park process could go. We could provide sample renderings and do some some looking at at the site options that you may have, you know, before we get into anything too official. But yeah, to really get going, we would want a contract to be signed.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the guys? No? Okay, I'm going to open this up to the public. Are there any questions for Mr. Lavacek?
Seeing none, okay. Oh, I do, but I couldn't find my raised hand. I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Olivia.
Apologies. Um, yeah, so I think Mayor Berkey was getting to this. But I do know that the city would need plans in order to approve it to then build it. And I'm wondering if Evergreen provides services even as baseline as doing a site analysis and providing renderings or plans and would be able to provide the city with those basic costs of being able to send someone out, do a site analysis, and then also be able to provide plans or renderings for approval, because I know that has been one struggle of getting the initial process going. So I just wanted to to ask that or if it needs to be an all like an all in service in order to actually even start that initial part of the process. So.
Well, it certainly can be broken up into design and then build services to not have to do it all at once. We definitely recommend the design build approach, mostly because we find it to be much more much more efficient cost-wise to do it that way. But we, yeah, we could not provide like custom designs for and plans for Porter Point Arena without any sort of contract being signed, if if that's exactly what your question is. But we're certainly willing to provide a sample, you know, a a price with a square footage, you know, I I don't know anything that could help the the process move along.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Billy, you have your hand up. Billy, you're on it. Okay, thank you, Ben. Billy, you have your hand up, Billy Orana?
Um, yes, I was wondering if Evergreen can help find grant funds as well to kind of fund the entire, the entire project. Because since we are such a small community, funds can be really tight. And like half a million or even like a quarter of a million dollars is, is more than the city can spend. But can you guys help us finding funds for the project?
Well, we do that a little bit, but it is not our main thing, you know? So I would encourage, we, we can certainly research and we do have like some grant writers that we can reach out to if we find the right thing. But I would also encourage, you know, if there's any project stakeholders in the community, or if there's any grant writers in the community or, you know, recreation organizations that they may be the best resource to go to for that. You know, and another option, you know, if you know, five hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars for a park is really hard to get to. We have also worked on projects where we build on top of existing infrastructure. So for instance, old tennis courts or, you know, basketball courts or parking lots or whatever, as long as the ground is smooth, we can sort of repurpose that type of slab and it provides a lot of cost saving essentially. So you could get, you know, a, a two hundred and fifty thousand square foot par, or a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar park for, you know, maybe more like a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just by utilizing that existing slab. So maybe that's an idea that you guys could look into.
Thank you, Ben. Olivia, your hand is still up, do you have another question or?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
Apology. I just wanted to clarify, essentially what I was asking before is if Evergreen would do an agreement or contract where it's truly like, where it's just a site analysis and plans or renderings to start out, so that the city could at least start the process. Because at per Mr. Arana's comment before, I know that then the, uh, the getting the funds and the grants to approve it, they need the plans in order to be able to submit for a lot of the grants. And so that's what, what I was essentially trying to ask.
Well, we could, I mean, potentially what you guys could do is is put out a bid for design services and only purchase those upfront. And then later on, put out another bid, RFP process for the building process. We, we definitely can't do like a custom design with the hopes that it might turn into a construction project. But what we are happy to do is is put in, put a sample design in, you know, that we've already created. That would be maybe roughly the size that you guys are hoping to do. Maybe even place it into your perspective park location. And hand that over, you know, with, with a budget and some specifics of how big it is, how much it would cost, maybe a broken down budget. You know, things like that, that could be necessary for securing funding or getting to the next step. We've had some success for sure. Helping out in that way, does that sound like something that would be helpful? Or do you really think that you need like the exact plans of what's gonna be built? Before moving towards a construction?
Olivia, does that answer?
Yes, it answers my question and I know, and I don't know if things have changed, but since I last talked with the city about the possible locations, I know that there was mentioned that we probably would really need an engineer because most of the locations that we were looking at were like sloped on a hill, not already a slab of concrete. And so it would require someone to be able to actually determine what could really, what could really happen if we were talking about like a sloped piece of land, you know? And considering all the, the elements, given that it wouldn't be like a, an abandoned like slab of concrete. So, but that does help answer, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? All right, this item is also a presentation item and not an action item. So thank you so much for attending, Mr. Labichek, and we will be in touch. And we're going to move on to our next item. Thank you, thank you very much. Next time is structural analysis for the Point Arena Pier.
Yes, the State Lands Commission and the City of Point Arena negotiated a new lease for the tidal waters below Point Arena Pier, which was approved by the council in February of twenty twenty. As part of the updated lease, the City of Point Arena was required to conduct a structural and utility safety assessment of the Point Arena Pier. At the request of staff, SHN Engineering contracted with Moffett and Nickel to conduct the study. Here tonight is our city engineer, Jason Iceland, who is going to present the findings of the report.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Good evening, Mayor Berkey and Council. As Paul explained, the city hired Moffett Nickel Coastal Engineers to conduct a baseline structural assessment of the pier. Inspection is referred as, referred to as a baseline study because it's the first time a structural inspection has been completed by a marine engineer since the construction of the pier, which is now ending or, or reaching the end of its design lifespan. Subsequent inspections, which are now required every five years, will use this report as a reference. In the future, reports will reference the conditions of each element as they're shown in this report. And they will be relative to those, those ratings. Moffett Nichols sent a four-person team from Seattle this fall to perform the inspection. This particular team specializes in pier inspection. Apparently they travel all over the world doing these inspections. The inspection was timed to be completed prior to winter and the swell forecast was monitored before they left Seattle to ensure they have a three-day window to complete the inspection. They had perfect weather and clear conditions and I'm pretty sure they weren't ready to return to Seattle weather when they left. They brought a dinghy for inspecting the piers at water level and as a dive platform for underwater inspections of the structural piles. For the pier deck and pile caps, they brought a bridge walker, which you may have seen along Highway One bridges where they drove, they drove out on the deck of the pier and has a basket that allows them to lower their, their engineer down so they can look up under at the bottom of the pier. So with that, let's go ahead and look at the assessment. I'm going to share screen here. Okay, are you able to see my screen share? Okay, excellent. So they, they broke the, 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 the pier into different elements, different structural elements and impertinences. And there's a rating system. CAR stands for Condition Assessment Rating, and I'll go through after we, after review this, what, what these ratings mean. The good news is that the structural elements of the pier are all in fair condition, which talking with Aaron Patterson and Moffett Nickel, the pier is, is, is in a condition that is entirely consistent with what you would expect for a pier of, of this age. So the structural piles are rated fair, fender piles are rated fair. That rating actually is, is now upgraded. They did the inspection prior to the replacement of the fender piles. And that was the main thing that they noted was that there were fender piles missing. Pile caps are fair. Deck panels poor. Pavement satisfactory, I think that's after the, after the paving was done last year. Guard rails poor. Boarding floating gangway, this is the one element that is serious, which means it should be replaced as soon as possible. Utilities fair. Miscellaneous appearances, that, that's essentially the ladders poor because they're broken off. You know, maybe ten feet above the, the high tide line. Overall, overall condition of the pier is fair. So just real quickly, I'm just gonna go through the, the structural elements which are, which are fair. What that, what that rating means is that there are localized areas of moderate to advanced deterioration. But they do not, the, they do not significantly reduce the loading capacity of the structure. So that, that's, that's good news. A poor condition states that that the, the overstressing and deterioration is more widespread, but still does not significantly reduce the load bearing capacity of the structure. So these fair and poor ratings that you see on this, none of them mean that the, the pier is unsafe a, as it is right now structurally. Or that any of the structural bearing capacity is reduced. Serious, which is one short of the, the lowest rating that they could give, which would be critical. Serious says that local failures are possible, repairs need to be carried out on a high priority basis with urgency. So that's, that's the overall assessment of the different elements of the pier. I am going to cancel this share and we're gonna look at one more thing here. There it is. Okay, so hopefully you're seeing a rough order of magnitude opinion of cost for the elements that, that are recommended to be repaired. So as Paul mentioned, sort of the grand total, these are rough order of magnitude costs, not actual bid estimates from a contractor. But it's, it's just under nine hundred thousand dollars for the repair, for the repairs, if, if the city were to do all of them right now. This is probably reduced by about, uh, let's see, the fender piles. Fender piles, they put an eighty thousand dollar cost to that. Those have been replaced this fall, so, so that kind of lowers the cost to just over eight hundred thousand. All of these items can't, can, can wait with the exception of the, of the floating dock, which you don't have to be a marine engineer to, to look at it and realize that it, it really needs to be replaced as soon as possible. And Moffett Nickel gave that a a rough estimate of a hundred thousand dollars to, to purchase that, purchase a new floating dock and have it installed. So the complete report I know is in your, in your packets. I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that, that I can answer. If any of your questions are beyond my technical expertise, I can reach out to Aaron Patterson and Moffett Nickel and, and answer or ask follow-up questions. Any questions?
Of course, I always have questions. Yeah, well, it's not so much a question as a concern. Looking at the summary that you just had up previously on construction costs. There was a few things that I thought should absolutely be done and I'm mostly gonna address my comments to you, Paul, and city manager. That so many of these things are about public safety. Replacing the life ring ropes, that's a no-brainer, let's just do that, hundred bucks, right? Replacing the ladders, replacing the light pole bracket, brackets, repairing the conduits and replacing the guardrails, please. These are things that need to be done and you know, it's too bad that it's all falling at once into our lap. But this is about public safety and you know, looking at some of the pictures in here, like photo twenty-seven, the gap between rail segments have been for extension drain. I mean, wow, this is just an accident waiting to happen. And it needs to be addressed like sooner than later. So the mid rail was loose and broken connections on photo twenty-six. I mean, there's some scary stuff in here and you know, the broken light pole at vent fifteen. We just have to fix this stuff immediately and thank Nick and Moffett for doing this report because you know, we all walk on the pier, we see it every day, we're kind of used to its condition. But when you see it in detail like this and it's pointed out specifically, it really opens your eyes and you see that we're just facing a huge liability problem here and it's just the right thing to do. Anybody else? What did I say?
I will just want to respond to what you said about the safety. We have purchased new life rings and life ring cabinets. We have a new rescue surfboard down there and we have repaired most of the lighting on the pier. So there is lighting at night if people are down there. So that's what the beginnings of the safety stuff we've done, but your points are very well taken.
Thank you.
I have a funding question. I have a funny question as far as boating and waterways or what, what? You know, what are we looking at as, as far as, as far as possible funding help?
So the boating and waterways launching facilities grant is what it's called, is an annual grant. We missed the deadline, the deadline was February first and what we would have to have to enter that round, we don't have, which are basically plans, costs, other things that they'll want to see to show we're serious. But I have begun talking with a person at DBW, Department of Boating and Waterways, to get us in the next cycle, which would be twenty twenty-four, February first, twenty twenty-four. So there are, you know, I, I would envision this being a multi-year project as far as permitting and funding. Something like the floating dock, I think is something that can be done sooner rather than later, because it doesn't involve major construction on the pier. It's just replacing the floating dock with the, the gangway. There's not a lot of permitting that would be required for that outside of State Lands Commission. The other work on the deck panels, the guardrails, that type of stuff would require permitting, which would come from State Lands Commission and the Coastal Commission. So that, that's always the hang-up in getting things done. As we saw down there, it took us about four years to get everything together to actually do the parking lot. So that's one of my concerns. Is the length of time it will take, that's why we discussed it internally and want to push the floating dock is the most important repair for safety, especially of our fishermen.
So do we have a way to finance that floating dock thing like now instead of waiting until twenty twenty-four?
That's what we're trying to find.
Doing it and getting reimbursed by boating and waterways next year, is that a possibility?
Yeah, no, I can ask, but I doubt it because it's a pretty rigorous process you have to go through to get the funding. It's, it's not, I won't say it's guaranteed, but they will be very interested in the pier because they help build the, funding building of the pier and it's public access point.
Are, are there any of these issues that would shut the pier down if they're not repaired in the next couple of weeks?
That's a Jason question.
Yeah, yeah, I can feel that, Anna. So the, the, the floating dock, I would say is the only one that, that fits into that category. Everything else is either in fair or poor condition. Most of those items being in fair, which means somewhere in the two, three, four-year horizon is kind of appropriate, it should be done in that horizon. The, the floating dock is, is definitely should be, should be addressed this year if possible. Right? Sure, you're welcome.
Photo twenty-seven, the gap between the rail segments.
That's something.
Gotta do something tomorrow. Right?
I agree, I totally agree.
So can we do that? Yeah, I'm sure we can do something better than a little chain. Get some wood. Yeah. So the boarding float and gangway, that's a, a unit that we purchased, it's not constructed.
So it would be, it wouldn't, as opposed to say repairing the concrete on, on the underside of the deck. So it would be, it wouldn't, as opposed to say repairing the concrete on on the underside of the deck. That's that's a contractor has to come out and do that work in place. The boarding float will be something that someone that is a fabricator would come out and take measurements of the existing boarding float. Fabricated off site. And then come in and install it, which is why. We think that from a permitting standpoint, this is this is replacing a piece of equipment. It's not, it's not construction in the way that. A lot of these other items will have to go through a much more rigorous. Permitting process that, you know, as well as finding finding a contractor that that can do that in the long work.
What kind of contractor builds a boarding float? Do we have any location in this? In the North Coast area that does that?
Yeah, I I think any any fabricator, um. There was a fabricator that we use down in Petaluma that that bent the pier hoops for us for the fender piles and. They did a great job of fan fan beaver, fan beaver. Um, yeah, um, I think there are a lot that are within striking distance that. That could could bid on this, give us a cost for it.
Great. I think we should get going on that, even if we can't pay for it, we should at least.
Yeah, we're ready.
Yeah, get it ready. Um, anyone else?
Well, and and then a crane uh comes and lifts that off with a uh truck and trailer and and puts it over the side and then. So how does that work?
Or I or may maybe use the, maybe the hoist can be used, the. The boat voice, the launch, but if not, yeah, it would be a boom truck. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be particularly heavy. Um. So so yeah, a boom truck could also do it, I would think. From the from the pier deck.
What's the rating of the crane as far as?
Well, we survived um Bill Daniel up there with his monster crane, so um. I think I think that we're we're more than okay to be able to to um to install a a boarding float.
Excellent. Okay, anyone else? I'm gonna open it to the public then. Um. Just use your wrist hand feature if you have a question. Can you um give me the screen?
This is it.
Oh, oh.
I'm sorry.
Show on there. Okay, Jennifer, Jennifer Smallwood, go ahead.
Yeah, does the uh the hoist or any of the other? Units that pick boats and tubs of fish up out of the out of the water, uh, they're not part of the pier?
They were they were not, they're not addressed in the inspection.
Oh.
That's correct.
We get an annual inspection of the hoist by Allied Crane uh coming up actually in the next couple of months, so that's that's something that's. Always monitored.
Okay, anyone else hands up?
Right?
All right, um, I don't see anyone. Uh, okay, this is a presentation. Uh, we need to give direction to City Manager, and I think I I've been really clear. About what I would like to see happen. Uh, is there any other direction that anyone would like to provide?
With regards to the floating dock?
Uh, no, just a um defensive analysis of the primary fear in general. I think uh, I think I covered it all. Yeah, anything that, okay, Paul, you feel directed?
I do.
Great. Excellent, thank you. Jason, thanks so much for dropping in and. That um really scary and wonderful analysis.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll see you around.
Okay.
Yeah, good night. Um. Nine reports and action items request by recology for early termination of this bundle contract early. Um, so um.
I'll give you a staff report.
You want to give a staff report?
Yeah, and I'll I'll read this for the benefit of the public to by not here.
Yeah.
Uh, so Recology is seeking to terminate its franchise agreement with the city. Uh, according to a letter received in December, which is in your packet. Recology is operating at a significant financial loss under the existing contract. Uh, spending more annually servicing the city than it collects in revenues. Uh, they cite section five of our current franchise agreement, which states that the rates approved by the city for services. Called for by the agreement shall provide a reasonable return to the company. Uh, in the letter, Recology estimated that would require a one hundred percent increase in garbage collection rates. In uh twenty seventeen, the franchise agreement with Pacific Coast disposal was converted to Recology upon sale of the former slatter. And with approval of the city council with assurances of no change in service. That agreement is set to expire December eleven, twenty twenty five. In twenty nineteen, Recology approached the city to request they'd be allowed to some contract with solid waste of Willets for collection services. Part of the reason was due to the cost of recology to operate on the Mendocino coast. The city council approved that subcontract. Now, Recology is requesting the city release a request for proposals. For a new garbage hauler with a targeted date of the end of this year for transition. That would end their current contract with the city two years early. The reality of a successful RFP for garbage service in our area is not likely to yield many proposals. Garbage service rates will likely increase perhaps dramatically. I am seeking direction from the council for moving forward on this item.
Uh, yeah, I'm Mr. Stemmer. Hi, you know, I'm really sorry. I didn't realize it was you and I wouldn't move this item up. So that you didn't have to sit so long. Um, I'd be enjoying them, but thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah.
Um, okay, uh, do you have anything you'd like to add to the second part?
I'm here at. I'm Fred Stemmer of the General Manager, uh, Recology Snow Memorial, so I I thought I would come today to just uh addressing questions that you may have. I know this is a significant move, uh, not in a direction that. We certainly hope to get to, uh, and I imagine not for um some, maybe most residents here, but um. I I I do see, I do see a good alternative. Um, it's it's already proven that solid waste of Willets uh can do a great job for this community. They have been. Um, so. My my thoughts on this is. You you, there's two paths that that could be considered here. One would be to go through as our letter laid out, and it's the staff report. Uh, summarized is uh an RFP process could be initiated. The geographic location of Point Arena is going to receive one response.
Yeah.
If I was gonna bet and. You have, you have an existing rate structure one block away. Um, to use as a comparative basis that's below. Our projected required increase in order for us to just break even. We we have been losing money. Politically for five years here, so um. There there is, there is alternatively an extremely simple. And I think transparent process where you could look at your neighbor's rate structure. And what it would look like and save the costs associated with going through a request, a request for proposal, staff time, generally consultants involved with it. Um, but that would be, that would be your decision, uh, of course, so. I apologize, uh, this is not something that I'm happy to to come forward with, but this it's just not sustainable to lose this much money year after year, so. Um. I, this is, I think, the best solution for all parties here.
Thank you. Uh, any questions from Mr. Stemmer?
Thank.
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, how could you have uh so uh. Much underestimated your cost for this? I mean, how did you figure out what you should bid to get this contract in the first place?
Sure, we did not bid this contract in the first place. We we purchased uh. The Rado Group Company, which included uh fifteen franchises, one of them being Point Arena. So this was. A very small part of a very large acquisition. And it was an all or nothing acquisition, so there wasn't an opportunity to say this won't work. And then I have spent the last five years uh going contract by contract. Using audited financial statements, so it's full transparency as far as our cost basis. And then adjusting rates accordingly, so it's 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 a very open book process. It's been repeated a dozen plus times and. We're now here, so I I started with my largest contracts and then I've kind of made my way to the smallest, which this is.
Well, um, and why would your costs increase so dramatically?
My costs didn't, the the costs have always been higher than the revenue that were generated. It's just that. Finite resources, finite amount of time is you got to fix one problem at a time, and so that's what the last five years have been happening in order to correct the rate structures, so. This is extraordinarily out of market pricing, which is why it's essentially a doubling. If we were gonna use my trucks, my labor. Drive two hours from our home base in Santa Rosa on the best driving conditions and service the community. So um. Yeah, we we we've hoped to find uh efficiencies, synergies, ways to essentially improve that, but. You know, fuel's only gone up, disposal costs have only gone up, labor costs have only gone up. Um, there's just no way to bridge this.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else?
I'll note that Jerry Ward from Solid Waste of Willets is on uh Zoom.
Uh, did you want to add anything, Mr. Ward?
Yeah, I can give you a little more background. The uh contract that surrounded. The city of Point Arena way back in the uh before Recology took over. Also included the area that I service. Uh, the Rado Group uh had that. What they called the South Coast Franchise Agreement. And uh Rado at that time was uh losing lots of money as well. Did some uh nefarious things. And uh the the county kicked them out of that franchise agreement. They did go to bid about in two thousand twelve. I was the only bidder for the South Coast franchise. So unfortunately, uh Rado couldn't get out of the Point Arena contract because. He still had that in his name, so. Uh, that's Fred was right when they Recology took over Sonoma County franchises, they inherited the Point Arena one as well. It's always been a loser for um for either Rado or the uh. Or the Recology group, so. I can say that the rates over the years for South Coast have uh increased uh. Uh, to the point where uh, you know, with it's feasible for us to collect in that area now. Uh, even though the garbage and recyclables have to be trucked along distances, uh, but we've we've uh improved the infrastructure. At the Fish Rock Road Transfer Station to dump our trucks there as well as uh collect the recyclables and transport them to Willetts, so. That that in its ca- in itself right there would save. Saves lots of money where Recology doesn't have those uh those avenues, so that's a little bit of the background. But I think Fred's right, if it does go to bid, uh, I don't anticipate any other bidders um. Uh, besides ourselves that may be interested in it.
Yes, okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ward? Go ahead, Jeff.
So what I take from that is if it went to bid, you would be interested in bidding on it? Yes, we would, our company would be interested in bidding. We are servicing it now, um, as long as the uh service. Requirements uh remain pretty much the same. Obviously, if you want more services, uh, either through negotiation or through an RFP process. It might be higher, but uh based on the services we're providing through the subcontract with Recology, uh. Yes, we would be interested in uh providing that bid and uh you're looking at rates very comparable to what we're already. Charging in uh the Walala Elk Manchester area. How does that compare to what we're paying now? Well, to be honest with you, I don't know your rate schedule. I just have a subcontract with Recology, but Fred might be able to. Give you the uh what they're charging now. I think our thirty five, well, I sent the rate schedule to uh your city manager. He might have a copy of in front there. I think a thirty five gallon cart. For with recyclables would be about fifty seven dollars a month.
I I do have uh both the rate structures, so your most common service is that thirty five, uh, we we call it a thirty two gallon. It's it's thirty two, thirty five gallons. Uh, it's currently about thirty six dollars. Uh, the counting rate is fifty seven dollars, so. Again, we're estimating a doubling of ours, so that would put it at seventy plus. Jerry has economies of sales and local infrastructure that I don't have access to. And I assume that that's why his pipe structure is lower.
I do think.
That's one example. There's many other rate structures that that can exist. Um. We see twenty gallon containers uh in this community uh currently priced at thirty two. Uh, Jerry's collection's forty six.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna open this to the public if there's any questions for Mr. Ward or. Um, Mr. Stemmer, just raise your hand. And I don't see anybody, okay? So um, this is an action item. And the council needs to decide what they'd like to do. Um. I'm all for um terminating this contract early and uh turning it over to solid waste of Willets, if that's an alternative. I don't believe anybody else would bid on this if it was in an RFP, RFP process, because there are no hollers on the coast. So um, that's what I would advise. Um, is I never seen one? Um, no, I agree with you. I just I'm curious, would there be any interruption, so let's see what's transitioned?
No, uh, absolutely not, since we've laid the ground uh with solid waste of Willets already collecting. Uh, I would foresee if we uh receive correction from yourselves and um staff. We can begin that process, and I imagine a a sixty day transition would be reasonable, maybe ninety to go through a full bill cycle. Um, and then we're talking about less than a hundred accounts, so the transition should be very clean. Uh, seamless as far as the customers are aware as far as collection goes, it would just be a transition from the billing structure. And and honestly, with the the existing status quo with calls bouncing in between my office, Jerry's office, billings on our side, collections on his side. It's going to be a much simpler world when it just goes to one house.
Anybody else? Okay, if you're all good with that, then um. Do you need to uh do a vote or anything? We need to have a motion or?
No, I just, so what I'm understanding is that you would like to explore solid waste of Willets taking over the franchise agreement. Dependent on negotiations around price and service.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stemmer.
Thank you very much. I it's really been a pleasure getting to know the community, and I wish this could have worked differently, but uh you have a lovely community. And I'm just glad that you have somebody like Jerry uh to follow here. I know he'll do a great job for it.
Yeah, services have been really good lately.
Yeah.
Since we had our last go around.
It's it's been rocky at times, and I apologize for that, but I I do appreciate the opportunity and uh, like I said, I I really enjoy getting to know the community, and I'll be back.
All right.
I I want to know, City Attorney has her hand raised.
Jimmy? Miss Miss Chandler?
I just want to clarify that if you have a contract where you know that you're not gonna have more than one bidder. You are authorized not to go to the RFP process. And 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 negotiate directly with the contractor.
Okay, great, thank you, Jenny. Okay, so directed, good, all right.
Thank you.
Onto item ten, harnesses. And resolutions. Item A is resolution twenty twenty three dash zero four. Request for coastal permitting consolidation for a statewide fiber installation project.
Yes, our city planner, Scott Perkins, is going to take the lead on this.
Okay. Welcome back, Mr. Perkins.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Berkey. Uh, Caltrans is proposing to install fiber statewide along state uh roadways. And to meet deadlines and to streamline the review process, uh, Caltrans wants to consolidate the coastal permitting. Uh, I'll explain a little bit more what that means here in a minute. Uh, the project is called the Broadband Middle Mile Network and would install ten thousand miles of broadband infrastructure throughout the state. Uh, to make high speed internet service more broadly available throughout California. The project is supported through funding by Senate Bill one fifty six. That gave seven billion in funding to install the fiber over the next few years. The funding requires the issuance of permits by the end of twenty twenty four and the completion of construction by the end of twenty twenty six. Uh, the infrastructure will be placed along the state highway system owned and operated by Caltrans. About nine thousand miles of the network will be within the coastal zone, uh, three miles of that will be in Point Arena's jurisdiction. Uh, the Point Arena portion of the project would involve installation of fiber conduit and cable along Highway one through the city. Uh, representatives from Caltrans are available. I think you're in the Zoom meeting to answer specific questions about the infrastructure proposed in the city. Um, consolidating the permit would mean it would allow the Coastal Commission to process the city's portion of the project in parallel with the permitting for the rest of the project statewide. Caltrans District One is proposing, uh, to organize the city applications such that there's just one permit to cover all of the coastal zone. Uh, within their district as opposed to getting permits from each city or county and jurisdiction independently. Uh, the Coastal Act allows for a consolidated CDP process in cases where the project has some coastal commission jurisdiction. As well as jurisdiction of a local government like the city of Point Arena that has a certified LCP. Uh, consolidated CDP would help Caltrans in meeting their project timeline. Uh, the alternative would be processing, uh, multiple CDPs by multiple jurisdictions, which would allow analysis of the project as a whole. Uh, and by authorizing the consolidation, the council would allow, again, the Coastal Commission to process a coastal development permit for the fiber. Uh, in the city limits. There's a resolution attached to the staff report, and if adopted, that would begin the consolidated permit review under the commission, uh, the Coastal Commission to streamline the process. Um, I can answer questions about the consolidation process, uh, but again, the Caltrans folks in attendance are probably best to answer the questions. About the fiber project. Um, that's my presentation of the staff report. If you have any questions at this or the resolution, I can do my best to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Perkins? Yeah, I do. Um, question, Robyn, so. Um, who will maintain the section of, uh, the fiber going to the city of Point Arena?
Um, I think that'd be a good question for the Caltrans crew. Um, it will be in there right away. It will be on their property. Um, but as far as kind of the maintenance and operation of it, um, again, since we're consolidating the permit, the city wasn't really able to review the project as a whole. You know, they didn't submit a full application, that kind of thing. Um, so project particulars, uh, you know, we're going to rely on them to kind of fill in the gaps for us a little bit.
Would you like to address that to the Caltrans representative then?
Uh, sure. Um, so I'm Robert King. I'm the project manager for the, um, for the District One broadband. And, uh, so yeah, this would be, um, installed by Caltrans and maintained by Caltrans. It would be in our right of way. And, um, we, we will definitely assume the operational, we will be paying for, um. Power, you know, power supply, everything that goes into, uh, keeping the system running. So.
Jim, did you have a question?
Yeah, my question is, is similar and that is that, uh, I believe it was in the early eighties that, that, um. Uh, conduit for cable was installed in Highway one with boxes in the, uh, poured into the, uh, the sidewalks. And then they were stubbed out into different, uh, properties and that, uh, that cable and the conduit was, it was abandoned. Uh, at some point. And so, uh, is there some way for the city to be able to utilize that and it be made available to, uh, the. To the, yeah, to the properties up, up along, uh, on the sidewalks and Highway one in within Point Arena.
So I'm hoping that's a question I can have one of my, um, coworkers that are here, um, address Elias possibly.
I'll give it a shot. Um, I'm Elias Graham and the Office Chief for Broadband in North Region. So that includes districts one, two, and three. Um, so the California Department of Technology is overseeing the funds for the, uh, for the Caltrans, for the middle mile network. Um, when it comes to the community connections to that, that's what's called the last mile network. So, um, any opportunities for partnership or using existing conduits, uh, we can direct those questions to the California Department of Technology and they can explore the options. Uh, for connecting those communities. Uh, but we're, what we're basically installing is the middle mile, the kind of backbone to connect all the communities. And the last mile connection will come through later and connect all the, uh, communities to the, the main backbone. If that makes sense, but if you, if you have, uh, you know. Descriptions about the project or information about the project that we can share with, uh, CBP, California Department of Technology, um, we can do that.
Uh, thank you. I, I just wanted to clarify that you, you're going to look into, uh. For the possibility of, of us using that and being supported by this project.
I can try.
Okay.
Yeah, and also, um, you know, I'm sure once this, uh. This middle mile gets installed, there'll be opportunities for funding. And there'll be opportunities for your community to apply for funding, maybe, uh, some sort of joint effort with Caltrans to, um. There'll be, to get that local funding to get these projects done. So it always seems like there's, uh, there's a good opportunities to, um. To do a joint effort between Caltrans and the local communities. So we, we, we try to work with you on that afterwards too. Okay?
Uh, if I could add to, to my question, uh, are there, are there blueprints from that, uh, from that long ago, from the early eighties? When this conduit was put in by Caltrans, is there some way that, uh, that those, that conduit can be identified? So that we're not tearing, uh, having to tear Highway one up again to reuse that conduit?
So, uh, we have like ex- extensive ASBILTS, um, that we can pull. So if, if that was, um, if that was installed. Then I'm, I'm, I'm not familiar with it, but I'm sure there's ASBILTS that we can pull and utilize. And, um. I'm sure that's probably some ASBILTS that'll be pulled when they're, um, designing the section going through. Point Arena, just so that, you know, they don't encounter those when they're doing the new installation.
That, that'd be great if we could use those. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, good. Um, will there be accessibility to future, uh, use of the conduit for the city in particular? I mean, in, in the plans, when you're putting the conduit down, will there be means of accessibility in the future for the, to the conduit?
Yeah, the goal of the Senate Bill one fifty-six is to provide affordable, uh, high-speed internet for all, uh, communities, uh, for all Californians. So, um, so that's the goal, to connect all the communities. It's not just to install the middle mile down the, down the highways, to connect all the communities with high-speed internet access. Um, we've seen through COVID, the, the need for this, uh, the opportunity for e-health, for e-learning opportunities. Uh, and those underserved communities that didn't have access to those internet, um, options or had poor quality internet, um. Really had a detrimental impact on their life over that, the main two years of COVID. Uh, so there's a great need for this and that really the point of the entire program is to connect the communities and, and, uh, bring everybody into the digital world together. So I hope, I hope that answers the question. Um, if it doesn't, let me know.
Thank you.
And then they're also, um, we'll, we'll be having, uh, like vaults or access points like every twenty-five hundred feet. And so those will be opportunities to connect, um, local systems to the main system too. So we don't really have all the, um, the details on, they call it the, the last mile. Um, we don't, we don't really have the details on that yet, um, but. It, it's, it's in the works. I don't know how else to say it. Um, I, I hate answering questions when I don't know the answer. All right. Thanks.
Good idea. Yeah. Oh, I have a question about the network hubs. Um. They're pretty massive. I mean, it's a, we're in the building with a diesel backup generator and. Would we be having a network hub in Point Arena or are you that far yet? Do you have a master plan yet?
Um, I, I, Doc Ricky, do you know where the hub's going to be in this area? There'll be fifty miles.
Currently, um, there are no hubs proposed within Point Arena. And I did provide that information just as well, so, um, via email. Yeah, no hubs in Point Arena.
Can't hear you. Sorry.
Was that a no?
No, I think that's.
He said there's no hubs planned in Point Arena. If you're able to hear that, he said, um, there's no, he provided the information, but there's no hubs planned in Point Arena, Arena. Sorry.
Okay.
And just to let you know, we, we, we need a hub about every fifty miles. And the plan is to try to put them in like developed areas like, uh, Caltrans Maintenance Station. And try to put it behind the fence at a Caltrans Maintenance Station or some other, um. Public, uh, facility. That way it's not a new structure that's out in the open. It's something that'll be behind a fence and it already be in a developed area. So. You know, as you saw, the size of the building is pretty big, but it, it would help that that building was. You know, went somewhere where there were other buildings rather than, you know, at, at a turnout or a big pullout or like, you know, a parking ride or something.
Yeah.
We're trying not to make a big eyesore, you know?
Thank you.
I want to, I want to add like, you know, statewide, sometimes it's unavoidable to have those buildings there in, in a place that. Um, will be seen by the public. In those cases, we'll work closely with our landscape architects, uh, landscape architects to place those. Structures and make them aesthetically pleasing. Um, but sometimes they're required every fifty miles. And again, it doesn't affect to be a point arena, but there are. Um, there were originally hubs that were proposed in the coastal zone and we did our best to move those out of the coastal zone. Um, and, and maintain that fifty mile connectivity to provide the, the boosting signal between the hubs. So, uh. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that answers my question. Thank you very much. Uh, any other questions from the back? Thing, I'm, I'm going to go to the public. Uh, raise hand, please, please. Anybody would like to ask a question? Uh, I'm not seeing anyone. Uh, Robert King, you have your hand up?
Robert.
No. We all do, right? Uh, okay, great. Um, so this is a resolution. So I would entertain a motion. Um, in check of resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero four.
I, I would make that motion to, um, to, um. Accept your, uh, resolution, uh, twenty twenty-three zero four.
Yes, that's the one. Can I get a second?
All second.
Okay, Dan, Mr. Doyle's giving us a second, Councilmember Doyle. Thank you. Um, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Doyle.
I.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dobbins.
Yes.
Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Gina. Okay, thanks everyone. Um, next is item B, resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero five. And thanks for attending Caltrans and Mr. Perkins. Thank you very much for your input.
Uh, thank, thank you guys. We really appreciate the opportunity and we're looking forward to working with your community.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero five, providing a cost of living adjustment. Uh, Paul.
Yes.
Staff request.
Yeah, so, um, as you know, the municipal code charges you with adjustments to compensation schedules for city employees. Last adjustment was, uh, in December of two thousand twenty-one. Uh, since that time, like it was in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, inflation and the cost of consumer goods have increased substantially due to supply chain shortages and other challenges. Uh, most significantly, certain sectors of the economy have seen dramatic price increases. The crisis of gas, for example, which is a large expense in our areas, increased nearly twenty-five percent in the last year. Although it is starting to come back down. Uh, the city staff, as far as generally, but especially during the storm event, uh, recently. Uh, they really put in a lot of time and effort and overtime and et cetera to clean up the city and make sure it's safe for everybody. And that's one example of what, uh, our staff does, uh, on a regular basis. So I believe it's more than merited to increase by via cost of living adjustment based on the Consumer Price Index of our area. That index is at six point three percent, uh, December to December. So I'm requesting a approval, uh, to increase compensation for our employees. Uh, that doesn't include me because I negotiate that directly with you. Uh, but this would be for all staff employees of the city. Proximate cost, uh, based on current payroll is approximately twenty-five thousand dollars for the fiscal year.
Hey, any questions for Paul? All right, uh, public, any questions about the cost of living increase for city employees? Uh, Jennifer, Jennifer Smaller.
Yeah, I was wondering, um, is, is this is not an automatic thing every year or a, at a certain time of year? Or is this just how it works in Point Arena that you have to ask for it every year? Like, when was the last cost of living increase?
Well, the last cost of living increase was last December of two thousand twenty-one, which affected the twenty twenty-two calendar year. Uh, before then, there hadn't been one, I believe, in three or four years. Um, and it is not something that there's no, uh, union contract for our employees that are at will, um, although I'm a big union person. So that's a benefit to them. Um. There's nothing that, uh, requires an annual increase. So it is currently at the discretion of the council and, uh, city manager to bring it forward.
Okay, um, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero. Is it zero five or zero six?
It's zero five, sorry.
Oh, I might, uh, in my book, I need zero six. So should I just change? Okay, twenty twenty-three dash zero five. Um, I'll make a motion to, uh, through, uh, decision twenty twenty-three to zero five. Thank you, um, Vice Mayor Dobbins. And can I get a second?
All second.
Thank you, Councilmember, um. Black, you have lost name.
Hanson.
Yes, thank you. I just want to call everybody deaf and mad on the night. So, yeah. All right. Can we get a roll call vote?
Yes, Councilmember Doyle.
I.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dobbins.
Yes.
And Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Great. Fantastic. Yeah, I'm chiming. Yeah. Um, so item eleven is informational only. It's the Calcity's twenty twenty-two annual report. Um, I'm the delegate to Calcity's and, uh, absolutely loved everything they do. So. If you get a chance to take a look at their annual report, please do. Um. But we're not going to do it now. And then item twelve is our city manager and city attorney report. So I'm going to call, um. Ms. Chandler, if she has anything to report.
I do not. I, I will report to you in closed session tonight, but I have nothing other than that to talk about.
Okay, thank you. And, um, city manager.
Paul.
Paul Congressman. Would you like to make a report?
Sure, just a brief one. Uh, so with aftermath of the storms, uh, we have had, uh. Few different tree companies through town, uh, cleaning up the trees in the right of way. Uh, there were significant. Uh, falls on Port Road, um, on Lake Street and a little bit on School Street. And, uh, those have all been cleared, uh, by city staff and by Caltrans. Uh, there, you'll notice. At the rock wall, there is a large amount of debris and stumps that we are working through, uh, as far as chipping what we can. Uh, the same is a true across the street at Cypress Meadows at our lot there as well. That's where we moved all of the debris to. Um, crews have been great. Our staff has been there to support the crews working in the trees. Uh, but then also clearing all of the debris on Port Road, School Street, Lake Street, uh, was quite a, a long process, still ongoing, but it's basically done at this point. Um, I have, uh. Talked briefly with the Mendocino County Office of Emergency Services, uh, to begin the process of working with CalOES, uh, on reimbursements. Uh, my main concern, uh, the tree work and overtime was fairly substantial for the city's budget. And so backfilling that with reimbursements is my hope. Uh, otherwise there's other areas of the budget that will. Be compromised because of the expense. Um, the, we put out the bid for the downtown park, uh, improvement project this last week, and so that will run until February twenty-second. Uh, we will get the bids back, uh, make a selection that we recommend and bring it to the council at the February meeting. And then hopefully construction can begin soon thereafter. Uh, it's been a, been a long project. Um, and then the other thing I'll just mention is that the crab season, uh, crab season opened a while ago and the guys were finally able to get in the water after the storms. Uh, I'll attest to the fact that the crabs are pretty meaty this year. Uh, so that's good. Um, and that's all I have to report. Right now.
Fantastic. That's a lot of stuff. Thank you. Can I make some comment? Yeah, I think the guys have done a stellar job. Yeah, I think the guys have done a stellar job after this storm has really come. It's just been a means into how quickly things got dealt with. I'm very, very grateful.
We have a really good crew.
Yes, thank you. Okay, item thirteen are this future agenda items for the next forty five days. February seventh, twenty twenty three is our local coastal plan update workshop. That's with the blueprint.
Yes.
And then February twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, it's our regulation to the council meeting. And then one of my favorite items is the new year budget review, where perhaps we can find an extra hundred thousand pound for our new floating dock. And that's it for tonight, except for our closed session, which we will be going into just as the council, and we will report back out when we're finished with our meeting. But I want to thank everybody for attending. It was a very productive meeting. Thanks you so much for your participation. And I'm going to recess for ten minutes, and we'll come back at eight twenty one. Thank you. All right, we're back at, I believe, eight fifty PM, reporting out that we are further directing Paul to negotiate our settlement of the litigation. And that's it, okay? Thank you, everyone, and we will see you next month.